All right, everybody. Beth is going to continue to try to get on, but in the interest of time, we're going to move forward. It is 5:06 PM on April 12th, 2020. It's April 12th, right?
April 13th.
April 13th, 2020. And I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. At this time, I'm going to first remind board members to please, and anybody that is attending virtually, to please keep yourselves on mute. There is a function to raise your hand, and Clerk Peck will keep an eye on that. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand, and then she will call on you, and we can address it that way in an orderly fashion through this virtual meeting. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-715-261-0598 or through the virtual WebEx meeting. And the web address can be found on the Wassa School District website. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live by the Wassa Area Access Meeting on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Meeting also livestreams the meeting The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. At this time, we will move to Agenda Item Number Two. And this is to approve the virtual board meetings in emergency situations policy, which Dr. Hiltz will present now.
Thank you. So the draft policy is available for review. There was one suggestion to change the document that the reason for the emergency situation must be included. I think that's a friendly amendment if the board is comfortable with that.
Were there any questions or comments to this proposed language?
There's one. Lance Tralup has a question.
Okay.
Just let me unmute.
Hey, Trish, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. The first is in the second paragraph, it talks about, let me stumble over to that there, the procedures for invoking a meeting, but there's never any procedures really mentioned until we get to the additional statements number six, where it talks about whether board members are unhappy with the president having called a meeting. One of the easy ways out of this is if we change that second paragraph to read, these procedures may be invoked upon the where president's determination removing the materials in between that beginning of the sentence and then that second clause, second clause. I'm wondering if there's any reason why it needs to say one or more meetings by the decision of the board? And if we're going to continue with the language that's here, perhaps we need to have some procedures marked somewhere in the document.
Sorry, I can't hold up either.
Okay, it's muted, so you can talk if you want. And Lance does have his hand up. Okay. I'm just trying to fix it because my sound is picking up Keith.
There, I just muted mine.
Okay.
So, okay. Thanks, Jeff. I see what you're saying. I know that Lance has a question or comment and may or may not be related to this, so I'm not sure if we should move forward with that as well while we consider your concern here, Jeff.
Sure. I want to just get through mine really quickly and then we see what the other comments are. And the second, it says at the bottom of page three that we cannot conduct any evidentiary due process hearings whether in open or closed session. And from reading the document, I'm not sure that we can hold any closed sessions. Is it the intention of this policy that we can hold closed sessions for other purposes? And if so, maybe that ought to be clearly stated as well.
We weren't planning on holding any closed sessions in this format.
I can mute it, but I just need to make sure I have it up here.
Just to be clear, though, we're not planning to hold any closed sessions in this format, but there are circumstances in which closed sessions are permissible. Should we need to, anticipating some kind of emergency, it would still be valid under the policy as presented. I'm just anticipating what we might need to address under statute that we can't convene because of global pandemic, but we still need to address.
I agree, Trish. I don't see why we wouldn't want to keep that option open.
So just for tonight, we left it as not having closed sessions. We can certainly add that. We wrote it the way we did so we didn't have to worry about the closed session conversation, just so we'd be ready to have this meeting tonight.
Right.
If the board's interested, we could certainly amend that policy to allow for closed sessions.
I think that works.
I think the bigger thing here is that we can certainly amend going forward, but we want to have our next meeting. And we need to approve this policy to do that. Lance?
Yeah, so I think Jeff's point on that second paragraph is valid that we shouldn't refer to procedures by which the board itself could call a virtual meeting if we don't have those procedures. My question was regarding the definition of quorums, which is on my page four. It's section four. And it refers to the fact that a majority of the total members of the board will constitute a quorum, but we still do have one committee that is less than the whole board. Audit Committee quorum is only three out of four members. So I'm wondering, and maybe Bob can answer this. Is there ever a time that we would have to do the audit committee meeting virtually? If yes, then I think we need to address that in some way here. And it could be simply addressed by it's a majority of the total members of the board slash committee.
I do respect the need to have an audit committee next time, one of the regular early schedules, April 27th, federally.
Yeah, I think it would be useful then to point out that a quorum is the majority of the board slash committee because we certainly don't need five members to have a forum at the audit meeting. We don't even have five members.
Good catch. Let's do that.
Okay, I think that's great. Quorums for any virtual meeting slash, oh, wait, where are we at? Slash board. Where exactly in the language now? Sorry.
It's under quorum, page four.
Okay, I think I'm at number four. Oh, okay.
Yeah, yes. Second sentence, it says a majority of the total members of the board shall constitute a quorum. And I think it would just, it could just say board slash committee. And then the last sentence again, board slash committee. And I'd be open to some other way of addressing it. I just want to make sure that it points out that we don't need the majority of the board for committee meetings.
Okay, I think that's a change that we can make as a friendly amendment tonight. Going back to the concern that Jeff highlighted and that Lance reiterated in reference to procedures, we don't have those procedures laid out.
Would the board be comfortable, moving this forward, we can address, we can create some procedures?
You gotta unmute yourself.
I'm just, I'm talking to Trish.
Yeah.
Want to do it that way?
I think so. I think so.
Do you want me to ask?
Sure, that's fine.
Would the board be comfortable approving this policy? And we can draft some procedures and insert those for the next meeting? I see a thumbs up. That's good.
As it's written tonight, with consideration for those two suggestions for at a future meeting. I can.
Okay, all in favor? This is a roll call vote. All of our votes tonight will be roll call votes.
All right, here.
So I have a question. And is that change regarding the quorum, is that being added then?
Tonight.
An hour or nine? It is being added tonight?
Yes, that's a friendly amendment, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Jim Boucher? Jim?
He's working on it. Thumbs up.
Jim's a yes.
I think he's got to vocalize that, though, doesn't he?
Jim, can you try unmuting it and saying yes, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin, oh, sorry. Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche? Lance Tralup?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker? Yes. Oh, we did it. Good job.
You got the first vote done.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. We'll have those procedures for the next meeting. But now I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Sounds horrible. Second.
And this has to be roll call just because? For purposes of precision?
I think for this one, we don't need, for these ones, we don't.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, but who is the first and second?
I didn't see it.
Can I get somebody to raise their hand? Who was first and who was second?
A number one and a number two.
Jeff Lee?
Jeff Lee, number one or two.
And number two? Who is number two? Lance. Lance is number two. Okay. Okay, so we're not going to do roll call on motion to adjourn, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. The special meeting is adjourned. All right, it is 5:21 on April 13th, 2020. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. At this time, I'm going to go through a little bit of information as we are meeting virtually due to the COVID-19 global pandemic. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, the COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology, and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-715-261-0598 or through the virtual WebEx meeting. The virtual meeting web address can be found on the Wassa School District website. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live by the Wassa Area Access Meeting on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Meeting also livestreams the meeting The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. I'd like to remind board members to please mute yourselves, but when you do have questions or comments, to please raise your hand using the function through the system, and Cassie will call on you. At this time, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the roll call. Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin? Beth Martin? Got it. Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche? Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Tralup?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker? Present. Okay, at this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Agenda Item Number Four, Reading of the Mission Statement. It is the mission of the Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. At this time, we move to Agenda Item Number Five, Public and Student Comment. Cassie, has there been any submitted public or student comment?
There has not.
Okay, there is no student, public or student comment submitted. So we are moving to Agenda Item Six, Approving the Consent Agenda. I do want to acknowledge donations to the district. Highland Community Church Women's Ministry, I don't know if you can hear me better that way. Maria Shalo, Keith and Vicky Trevillian, Deb Young, Roxy Deimers, Zachary Klinger, Sheri LaFine, Morgan Persha, and Mike Troy. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for those donations to the district.
Teresa and Lance. Lance got number one, I guess.
Thank you. That worked perfectly.
And this is going to be roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Jim Boucher? Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin? Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Tralup?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Agenda Item Nine, or I'm sorry, Seven, Old and Recurring Business. At the Education Operations Committee meeting last month, we had the Whole Child, Whole Wassa Short Cycle Report on Goal Two. W2, that is Staff Wellness. That was presented by Judy Lodall, Director of Special Education, and Angie Lloyd, Director of People's Services. We are moving on to Agenda Item Eight, and New Business. And this is going to be the DPI waiver resolution to the board, a public hearing to consider submitting a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the instructional hours requirement due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. I will turn that over to Dr. Hiltz at this time.
There, all right.
All right.
Can you mute yours?
Thank you.
There we go. All right, so we are requesting waivers for three DPI requirements. One is the instructional hours. While instruction is going on, clearly, the number of hours that are required are not happening, so we would ask for that waiver. The second waiver is for the requirement for summary year completion of educator effectiveness for those teachers in their summary year. The process that we would propose would be to end all of that educator effectiveness work now and keep it until next year. Teachers could have a conference with their principal, and that could be captured. But otherwise, we would then just pick up the educator effectiveness cycle next fall, wherever it ended up. And the teachers, of course, would have to create a new SLO as they would have a new class of students. And then the last waiver would be for the requirement for students to pass the civic exam for graduation. There are a few students that still didn't pass that. And with uncertain access to technology, we would just request to waive that requirement.
Was I supposed to read the part about email?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So.
Can you mute mine? So we do it now. You've heard the waiver.
You've heard the waiver.
Yep. Sorry.
Okay, so you've heard the waiver, and we can accept public comment regarding this via email until the conclusion of the public hearing portion. Public comment for the public hearing may be emailed to cpeck@wassaschools.org with public hearing comments in the subject line. Clerk Peck will provide any public comment that is received to me. In following public comment, the board will be asked to approve the presented resolution.
And there's no public comment at this time.
Okay.
All right, that was the full presentation of the resolution.
That's it. Yep, that's all we need.
Okay, so Clerk Peck has confirmed that there is no public hearing comments submitted at this time. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the DPI waiver resolution as presented.
I think that was Jim.
Jim and Pat McKee.
And Pat.
Okay.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Tralup?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker? Yes. All right. Okay. Okay, thank you. We're moving on to, this would be Agenda Item Eight-B, Student Transportation Contract Amendment. And Bob Tess will be providing, or I'm sorry, presenting on an amendment to the student transportation contract.
Thank you. Cassie, to you, please project the advancement.
Yes, just one moment, please.
In response to a discussion Dr. Hiltz and I had with First Student, and probably more so in response to market conditions and what's happening across the United States, certainly in Wisconsin, and also acknowledgement of First Student's overhead costs and operating expenses aren't captured throughout the year necessarily. If they offered zero transportation services, they would get zero revenue for us. So there's a picture that Cassie will have up on the board real soon. And in theory, each run that they have, if you project that picture, the next one after that. Thank you. In theory, every run that they have has a component of overhead to it. And the break even point, and this is just a visual that's not numerically real accurate, but the visual speaks to what is happening theoretically. And in actuality, each run has an overhead cost. And since they don't charge anything for no runs, it takes them a while throughout the year to capture their overhead before they break into the blacks, so to speak. So in response to market conditions and doing what's right, seeing what the rest of Wisconsin is doing, and certainly our neighbors to the south, we negotiated, and it was more of a discussion than anything with First Student, what they needed for the rest of the year to keep their drivers and their employees employed. And also help us with some planning that we're doing, some of it referendum-related, some transportation with the hygiene bus and meal deliveries and some of those things. But then we keep on doing that. And the number that we arrived at was 85% of their normal home-to-school routes, and 67% of their home-to-school special needs routes, we pay for all the fuel outside the contracts, all the fuel costs are cost savings for us no matter how we slice the First Student contract. And also, First Student would get none of the revenue that they normally anticipate this time of year for extra trips. They're very, very busy in the spring with all the different sports seasons going. They would get none of that revenue for this proposal. So what we're asking the board to approve is 85% of the regular school-to-home routes on days we do not have school, and 67% of special need routes on days we do not have school.
Sorry, I was going to unmute. Sorry. Hopefully, I'll flag you for that.
All right, thank you, Bob. Cassie, can you see, are there any hands raised by board members with questions?
Just one second. Takes me a while to switch between sharing and. Let's see. Lance has his hand raised.
Okay.
And so does Jane.
Okay, so we can take them in that order. All right, first question, Lance?
Yeah, Bob, if we were to assume that this is going to be our norm now and throughout this school year, do you have any idea estimate what sort of money we're talking about to carry us through until, let's say, summer school starts on time?
Yeah, if we miss out on fifth Mondays, which would be not going back to school, the savings would be about $149,000. The cost for First Student would be approximately $755,000. $755,000 would be the reduced cost. Our savings, the First Student alone, would be approximately, say, $149,000. So that's because it's not 100%, it's 85, 67. We would save probably another $100,000 on fuel. And there would be $51,000 worth of trips that they wouldn't invoice us for because they would be extra tickets for steel trips next semester.
How many years do we have left on this current contract?
This is here, one of the contracts. And this amendment, I made sure it only is for this school year. This is not for the remaining four years of the contract. We want to be a little bit more intentional and get it more closely for four more years. But I suspect both parties would be interested in entertaining a permanent change, But I suspect both parties would be interested in entertaining a permanent change or at least a four-year change to the contract that might have more of an effect on snowdaves. Many school districts across Wisconsin, including VCRs, have a built-in part of their contract that allows bus companies to reap some of the lost revenue from snowdaves. We had eight snowdaves last year and First Student recouped none of that money for lost revenue.
Was there any discussion with First Student about renegotiating those last four years in a way that would allow us to pay them this money now, but allow us to save this money over the next four years? Because the way I look at it is, we have the fundamental budget for it now, but we're also looking at a possible cut in the future years. If we're going to be agreeing to a substantial payment like this for the next several months, it would seem that we should be getting that back then over the next four years.
That has been brought up, but at the same time, this decision would be independent of the remaining four years of the contract.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is I don't think it should be. So I'm saying if they want to renegotiate right now, I don't think we give away $750,000 and then renegotiate. I think that's part of the renegotiation for what the next four and a half years of the contract looked like.
That would certainly provide more leverage. That's what we want.
Well, I think that you have to weigh that though against, it provides more leverage, but leverage to get what? I mean, how much do we think we left on the table over the next four years? Right? I'm saying if we felt it was a fair contract when we signed it, I don't know that, even though we have the leverage, it's in our best interest to necessarily try to squeeze 750 grand out of them over four years. It's almost $200,000 a year. It's got to be a pretty high percent of their margin.
If I may, Bob and I have had a number of conversations, sorry, this is Keith in case you can't tell, and basically we would be covering their overhead costs. Anything that we get back as part of a renegotiation would really be a loss for them, not just reducing their profit, just as a note.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But everybody's hurting, not just this company. The company's not going to go bankrupt based on our decision here. The job market is, if I would have to guess based on my completely non-expert opinion, is going to be easier to find bus drivers considering how many people have lost their jobs than it has been lately. And I just don't see with the worries that we have about budgets and the cuts that we have, I just don't see us giving away $750,000 and not renegotiating the next four years as part of that. But, you know, if the majority of the board disagrees, they disagree, but I wouldn't admit to that $750,000 and then renegotiate. I think First Student is in a position to tell us how much they can afford to give up over the next four years, which would also tell us how much we would then give them now.
Jane.
Understood. I can obviously communicate this with First Student and what we're talking about right now is leverage itself. Even if we agree, but they didn't want insurance from me that this was going to happen. And Dr. Hilton and I both quickly said, we cannot offer that assurance. This is a board decision. We can offer insurance that we're going to take it to our board. So right now, First Student Regional Leadership on WACI, they understand we're having this conversation and they understand that it's not final and they're probably going to be expecting a phone call from me tomorrow to ask how this went. And even if it is approved, what we're talking about now will be part of my conversation with them.
If I recall, and I don't want to dig up the old RFP right now, but if I recall, the other offers that we had received back, they were substantially higher and over the next four years would end up costing us collectively more than 750, right?
Yes, the percent that First Student was going to go up from their last year of their whole contract to about nine and a half percent. So the year we're in the middle of is the expensive one and from there it's up about three and a half percent and making subsequent years. The other competitors were in the range of 20 to 30%. Correct.
This is Tricia, just to piggyback off of Pat's comment.
Renegotiate, you better have the credibility.
I couldn't hear, am I muted? I'm muted, okay. You're muted right now, Tricia.
That's true, but we also have the alternative is we don't renegotiate at all and we just continue forward for the next four years that we have and we don't spend $750,000 on this. So that's our alternative. We don't have to go look for a new bus service company.
Correct. Our alternative is the existing contract, but at the same time, in our existing contract, there are some conditions for labor market influences that cause them to be short drivers. And that's how the conversation started. When they come out of this, when we all come out of this, they want to have a full complement of drivers. And going in, it was tough. There was a nationwide bus driver shortage. And I agree with what you're saying, Lance, the labor market's going to change, everything's going to change. I don't know who the labor market, the world's going to change. And I don't know what the demand for CDL drivers will be. And these are like CDL drivers on steroids because it's CDLS and to have a CDL student license, it is still given away. So I don't know how we're going to come out of this with our labor market. Probably won't get worse, but will it improve? I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to say something. All right, this is Tricia, I apologize, I had a little technical issue there for a second, so it might have been addressed between Pat and Lance. One of my concerns is there was a comment made that the company's not going to go bankrupt. I don't know that we know that for sure and my concern would be that if they do without this, then we are kind of forced to work with these other companies that were much higher costs to us, so it could still potentially be this much higher cost overall.
I think Jane's got a question, right?
Oh, and Jane has a question too.
Are we to meet yet?
Jane, it should be Jane. Let's go, Jane.
Okay, so what we're talking about is subsidizing a private company with public funds. So we're going to the taxpayer, attacking the taxpayer, providing a company with funds for not delivering service. Have we received any direction from DPI or anyone else on this kind of a thing? Because it's kind of a big principle involved here.
It is a big principle and I've got probably 30 different school districts, probably more than that, and data from each one of them, exactly what they're doing, and it ranges from 0 to 100, it really does. Some districts, it seems like the smaller ones are saying, nope, the contract says zero, we're going to give zero, we'll deal with the fallout afterwards. Some districts, it was not in the contract, but they're giving 100% and it's complicated by some districts have fuel included, so they certainly wouldn't be at 100%. We don't have fuel included, so we're protected on the fuel side no matter what. Also, the Federal Cares Act has language that says if we want some of this education stabilization funding, we should do our best to continue paying employees and vendors. It says continue to pay vendors as practicable. And that is left to pay probably intentionally, but they at least went out of their way to say it. So they're saying, pay your vendors. And in most cases, they mean maintenance and custodial cleaning services, food service and busing. And we hire our own maintenance and food service, so it's down to busing.
Can I go to Jane? Yes. Jane, can you go ahead with your question and then after that we'll go to Lee Webster.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First of all, they raised the bus drivers' wages $60 an hour because the market said they needed to and that's how they got their bus drivers. But I'm wondering, are they going to be eligible for these federal loans that turn into grants if they keep their employees employed? Because if they're going to, if they qualify for those and they take those, then they're looking to get paid twice, right? Because a lot of the overhead has got to be paid.
Yes, that was a big part of our conversation with them, that we're trying to, if we clear tonight's hurdle, build it into the actual amendment to say if they are entitled to or receive grant funding, that they don't get paid twice, that we get a discount to what we're paying them.
And that they have to apply for it? Because they could just say, oh, we're already getting it, so we don't need to bother the red tape with the feds.
Yeah, I don't know what the language says about requiring them to apply for it, but it's, I guess I could develop some language that requires them, but I don't know, I don't know what kind of teeth that would have. I don't know if we can create language that requires them in good faith if we will apply for a grant. Applying for a grant comes in a lot of different forms. You can apply for a grant, say you applied for it, not putting a good faith effort.
They did say they wanted to apply.
They did, okay.
It's difficult.
Specific, right. And the other thing is, I have a hard time paying our bus drivers through this method when we aren't paying our teachers aides and stuff.
Yes, we are.
They're our frontline and if we're not paying them wages, then we're going to do it for the bus company.
And our employees, the frontline workers are getting paid, teachers are getting paid, hourly employees are getting paid, everybody's getting paid and has full benefits.
Yeah, Keith is in here, is clarifying as well, Jane, that to your first concern, they did state that they will be applying and to your second concern, as Bob just pointed out as well, they are getting paid.
Okay, I just thought they were getting paid if they took a little class and got a couple hours.
Still.
I'm glad it's cleared up then, thanks.
But they are.
I'm all done.
Okay, Lee should be next. Okay. All right, Lee?
Yes, I think my question was the same one as Jane's because the payroll protection plans, those loans are there for a short period of time, they're very easy to apply for and as long as they meet the requirements, what happens is they're forgiven. So I was just concerned that we not be putting them, putting ourselves in a position where we're creating a problem in that they're getting paid double for the federal government or something and we're using our taxpayers' money and doing that. That was my concern.
Jim Boucher. All right, Jim, question?
I think I have a question, but more of a comment based on what I've been hearing, good points about the payroll protection and what Lance said at the very beginning. I think, Bob, we have leverage to negotiate on the front end versus the back end. Now, obviously, this is a rarity for this to happen, but I think we take the opportunity to talk with them and negotiate at this point in time versus saying we're going to just park, launch, pay for it and give that kind of money away. Because if they, they need to take a look at the payroll protection, we need a lot of that information for us to vote to go ahead from this point.
Do you have any comments, Keith?
I'm thinking about how to say it without being snarky. I think you're all bringing up a number of really good points. I would, I would share that Bob and I had one long negotiation session with First Student and I guess, you know, I would still support the request mainly because we want to make sure we, one, maintain a good relationship with this vendor, they're important to us. Two, they need to keep their workforce, in order to keep them, they have to pay them and their only source of revenue really is us. So while I understand your concerns, I think Bob and I are also very aware of the fact that we're using taxpayer dollars and are trying to be very prudent with that. So I guess I would just, I would still, I would make the request and we'll see what the board thinks.
Lance raises his hand again and can you remind everybody to lower their hand once they've had, if they don't have anything else to add. Okay. Okay, just a reminder, please, to lower your hand if you don't have anything else to add. It does look like Lance has raised his hand again, so that must be a new question, comment or concern. Lance?
Do we know when the payroll protection loan, what they would find out and how much they would be able to afford? Do we know the timing or the dollars would be on that?
I do not. I do know that if we pass this opportunity and we wait for a next board meeting, which we could do, they would offer me another month to discuss this with First Student. I suspect tomorrow, they would ask their drivers to file for it and once they file for unemployment, even though the requirement to seek alternative or other employment while unemployment seems to have been waived, they might lose some drivers because truck drivers are needed, CDL drivers are needed. And people that have a CDL for driving a school bus probably very easily become qualified to drive all kinds of trucks that are needed nowadays and their fear is they might lose some of them if they're asked upon. But they have shared with us that this was probably as lenient of a timeline as we could hope for and if we waited until the May board meeting, it might be too late. They will already have been all applied, had applied for unemployment. We could certainly wait until the May board meeting about a month from now. We could hold a special board meeting even the night of April 23rd, we're all together. A special board meeting the night of April 27th, we're all together. Those are not full board meetings right now.
That might be one of the pretty close sessions for negotiating.
The 23rd, okay. Yeah, Bob, it sounds like we have some hesitation with a number of board members, which I think is valid. Would it be possible to have a special board meeting at that next April date and we can get some more information in the meantime?
Yeah, see about that.
I think that's the date, whatever that next date is.
The workshop that we have planned for wraparound and discussion, April 27th is the next, Red Love's got that up, so next time we're together, you will be there.
I think the next time we're together, April 23rd would be good, that's the workshop day, but that should be fine. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, I'm saying some thumbs up, we don't need to vote on anything tonight then on that. Thank you, Bob and Keith, for that. So we won't be taking any action on that and we will await additional information. Okay, with that, we're moving on to Agenda Item, what is this, HC, Policy 5421, grading. There is possible action requested and Dr. Hilton is going to discuss Policy 5421 and how that's going to be impacted given the COVID-19 global pandemic.
Right, right. Thank you, President Zentz. So, board members, we've been talking quite a while about the best way to move forward with grading in this second semester and there's two, what I'm seeking tonight is your opinion on our current Policy 5421. If you review that policy, it says that a pass/fail grade can be used in appropriate situations and I'm not saying we are going with a pass/fail grading system at this time. Frankly, we have a meeting tomorrow with our full administrative team and they've been busy collecting feedback from our teachers on best practices related to grading in this setting. So the question I'm wondering is if the board is comfortable with the current language or if they feel a need to amend to give any more clarity. I'm very comfortable with the policy as it is, so I didn't make any recommendations, but I wonder if the board may want some clarification. I would also call the board's attention to a reference in the policy to Policy 2260 that asks administration to ensure equal access by all students to the programs, activities, facilities and practice. And frankly, in this current setting, I'm unable to ensure equal access. So that leads me to a conclusion that we would possibly bring an amendment for either a pass/fail or a credit, no credit situation, but again, that's, we're still waiting on feedback from our teachers. So at this point, I'm wondering if the board members are comfortable with our current language in Policy 5421 or are looking for some more clarity that I could certainly draft, seeing as we're not ready for a recommendation yet.
Okay, Lance has his hand raised. Okay, so we'll start with Lance.
So this isn't the policy itself, I just wanted to share with the board. So, this isn't, um, the policy itself. I just wanted to share, uh, with the board what I already shared with Keith. Um, I'm sure some of you also saw some of the media articles of other districts that went pass/fail. Uh, and it didn't go smoothly with some parents. And one of the suggestions that I saw multiple times from parents in different districts is that, um, at least for the secondary grades where they're using a grading system and they go by quarters to utilize the student's third quarter grades, assuming they passed the fourth quarter, um, rather than a student who got an A in the third quarter gets the same grade as a student who got a D in the third quarter. Kind of show what they accomplished. Um, I'll be interested to hear what the feedback is that Keith gets, um, from the administration and teachers, um, that at least initially, anyway, my first take on that is that sounded like that made sense that if we have third quarter grades done, that, um, that they would apply assuming that the student passes the fourth quarter. Um, it was just, uh, something to think about.
Thank you.
Other, other hands? Pat McKee.
Pat?
Yeah, my question is, does it have to be unilaterally one or the other? You know, if you're staying in, in college, right, you can take a course pass/fail and other, other students are taking it for the grade and the impact on the GPA. We have an option. Forget about the administration of it. I understand that that may be challenging, but does it have to be one process or the other for every student?
Okay. Uh, we had talked about differential processes from elementary to secondary. We had not talked about offering an option to parents, uh, or students. Um, I'll add that to the consideration, Pat. I'm not sure what that might look like. Thanks for the idea.
Jeff Lee.
Okay.
Jeff Lee?
Yeah, in, in a university, pass/fail is an option and traditionally at UWDSP is limited to five credit hour per semester, which hits your, you know, your, your larger mathematics or lab courses as single courses. That's the idea is that you can only do it with one course. What we're doing now is you go into unlimited numbers, so it won't impact a GPA and I've had a few students choose that. Um, I think it absolutely has to be optional. One of the reasons we do grades to begin with, or perhaps most important reason we do grades is so we can differentiate between options. This student accomplished more than that student. Uh, but where we have trouble, of course, is when we have students who don't have the support at home and may well find themselves into trouble. So, so I think we need to be able to look at those third quarter grades and see where they were. Uh, a second issue to think about is often if you go to pass/fail, that's often licensed not to do anymore. All you gotta do is the minimum to get by. And so I think in, in most cases, it doesn't do the student a big favor to allow them to pass maybe because they've worked a whole lot less hard. We've done an awful lot to try to give them every opportunity to be able to attain an education during these times. I think maybe we have to have a pass/fail option for those students who have whole situations that aren't making them possible for them, but I think for the great majority, they absolutely should go with the traditional.
Okay. All right, I'll let you go first.
Uh, okay, thanks. I just have a couple of comments. Um, we have teachers on here that serve on the board, professors. I've been grading for 14 years myself, but I'll tell you, um, this is very difficult as a, um, parent trying to homeschool. And I consider myself somebody who's very organized and very on top of things and with just one child, and I say just, one child, um, I, I'm finding it to be difficult. So, I do wanna highlight what you are also highlighting, Jeff, is the students that don't have support systems at home. Because, um, I can say that in very supportive systems, there's some struggling. Um, and I'm just gonna be very honest about that. So, I think it's really difficult right now to say, to, to look on the one end and think, well, some students just aren't gonna do enough because they're gonna do the bare minimum. Personally, my concern would be, what about those students that don't have the support? And, uh, I'm inclined to rely on our experts, um, which is our administration and the feedback that they're giving with the thousands of students that we have in this district. The best way to approach this, this is such a messy time, but it's a temporary time and these grades are going to be a snippet on their academic, um, you know, careers. So, if we do go to pass/fail and that makes the most sense in the short term, I'm gonna be comfortable with that. Um, even though there might be some of those students that slip through and get that pass by doing the bare minimum. So, I guess I just wanna share that feedback just as a, um, as a mother trying to, to navigate this and being a very supportive system, thinking about our students that don't have supportive systems.
Jim Boucher, then Beth Martin.
Okay, so then we have some additional comments. We'll go Jim, then Beth.
Uh, I'll just make it clear. I agree with what you're saying, uh, Tricia and, and Jeff. Bottom line is, that does give a person the opportunity to, you know, just do the bare minimum, get a pass out of it, et cetera, et cetera. I'm a little concerned about, you know, the seniors really don't have to worry about because they've already sent their transcripts in or not transcripts, but the applications in and all that kinda stuff. But those sophomores and juniors that are really working on their GPA, that's where I really concerned about for them for the future. And I agree with you on that, Trish, looking at it from a secondary point of view. I would go with what the administration's finding out from the teachers. Do the teachers have enough that they can really give sound differential grades to all the students? Do they have enough material data to do that? So, I just wanted to throw those two cents in there. I'm concerned for the sophomores.
Thanks, Jim. Beth?
Hi, I guess, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would go with the recommendation of the teachers and the administrators partly because, um, everybody in the whole country is in this same situation. So, if you've got kids that are working on their GPAs, colleges are gonna know that this spring of 2020 was an unusual situation and they're gonna take that into account. Um, I think we have to let teachers focus on engaging kids and making sure they're okay and, uh, focus less on grading, in my opinion. But I would go with the majority of what secondary teachers say as a group and what elementary teachers say as a group and it might be different between those two levels. But I think they know, they'll know what's best, once you get the feedback.
Pat McKee has something.
Thanks, Beth. Pat?
Yeah, just one other question, uh, or perhaps consideration, Keith. I don't know how easily accessible the historic grading data is, but it would be interesting to see what types of grade deviations existed in the secondary schools from third to fourth quarter. Meaning, you know, do you have a lot of kids, if you go with example, for, you know, with a third quarter grade, whatever that ends up being, in what percentage of kids go down, you know, two or more levels or whatever it is historically, just to figure out what that deviation would be? Uh, because as you guys have said, and I agree, right, these are unprecedented times and we need to do some things that are creative and then not necessarily analyze those who have been working hard. Uh, and I fully agree with all the other comments about those that may not have, you know, strong support and it is challenging for, for everybody, myself included. Uh, I just, I'm like, Jim, a lot of the secondary stuff as well, so. I would just be interested if it was easily accessible, if we could just do a quick sampling to say, hey, you know, this is what we see historically, third grade is, third quarter is a pretty good indicator of what they're gonna do in the fourth quarter. You know, no harm, no foul there.
Are there, are there other questions?
Um...
As long as Beth doesn't have anything else, her hand is up.
Okay. Um, Beth, did you have another question or comment or your, cause your hand is still raised? It, in the meantime, though, it sounds like we, we have our concerns about grades. Um, a lot of great comments and feedback that came up, but I don't know that it means that we need to make any changes to the policy then. Uh, that what I'm hearing is the concerns, um, but that the policy as exists is, um, we're going to keep it as is at this time. Yes? Okay, then I'm, not saying I'm seeing thumbs up. We're not gonna, there's no action item here then. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to, um, Education Operations Committee meeting. We're still on agenda item eight now, D. Uh, number one, instructional technology. Uh, at the March Education Operations Committee meeting, John Euding, Director of Technology and Media Services, presented on instructional technology. Number two, virtual learning days. At the March Ed, Education Operations Committee meeting, John Euding, then also presented on virtual learning days. And then we have number three, coronavirus planning update. At that same meeting, Angie, direct, Angie Lloyd, Director of People's Services, updated the board on coronavirus planning and the proactive steps that the district is taking. Um, Dr. Hiltz or Ms. Lloyd, are there any new developments to share with the board at this time?
I see Angie shaking her head.
No.
And all I would say to the board is that we've, uh, we've, we've taken the feedback from, uh, teachers and parents and enacted a few structural changes in terms of when work is posted uh, and increasing the level of, uh, interaction via video, um, cause the kids are feeling a little lonely. Um, but otherwise, we are continuing just to refine our practice. Um, Angie, anything new?
Nope, um, just wanna reiterate that safety of the students is our number one concern. So, that's kind of what teachers are on top of all the time, making sure the kids are okay. If we have a concern, we send over SROs to do welfare checks and that's been working out really well.
Great. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move to agenda item nine, committee updates, board referrals. Are there any committee updates or board referrals? Doesn't seem likely in, since the last month. Okay, moving on to open forum.
Did you wanna? I had to check and see if anybody had their hands up.
Oh, sorry, okay. Uh, board member professional growth and development report. Uh, we've pretty much been under quarantine since our last meeting, so that would be, but we've been with lots of online options, I guess. Anybody have any professional growth or development for the month? Any hands?
I do not see any hands.
It sounds like Jeff might have something. Uh, Jeff Lee?
Well, Kathy, this is my last meeting, I guess, I'm at.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, she's nodding, okay. She's totally did. But yeah, so I just want to, uh, to, to tell the district administration that when I came onto this job six years ago, we had a nice meeting with all the department heads and I told them how much I appreciated seeing my kids' education, my vice, I mean, how much I, and of course, all the graduates I get through the university system, that I really absolutely appreciated the job that the district was doing. And now, six years later, I can only be more accomplished. Um, I'm really impressed with the team that we have assembled now. I think in that first meeting, Bob, and maybe Amy, you are the only one in the room, amongst the room there. So, we've had some turnover, but this is a very solid administration. I think the, the board, to give ourselves a pat on the back, did a great job, uh, hiring a new superintendent and things seem to be going two years out now, like streaking out. So, um, I wanna thank again the entire staff and particularly, uh, the administrators that I've gotten to work with over the last years, uh, to the board. I very much enjoyed getting to know you all and I know you can make promises, but, um, not likely we'll ever see each other again in this sort of a setting. Uh, so, uh, while we get that chance, I wanna thank you for your service. Um, when Mary Tao left the board, she said that we ought to really appreciate the ability that we've shown to speak to each other civilly and that's something that I wanna reiterate. Hasn't always been the case, but most of the time. Uh, before you speak, think about what's in the best interests of the district first. Right? So, anything that comes up, what is gonna help the district the most? And if the answer is, well, maybe I gotta not do that in open meeting or say something, it may be a shock. Okay? So, keep that always first as you go to the board. Again, thank you very much for, for the opportunity to work with you all.
I'm gonna say a comment. Okay. Well, Jeff, I wanna say thank you. I had something that I was going to say to you in, uh, presiding officer commentary. There might be other board members that want to say something after I say this very short thing, but I wanna thank you very much for your service. You've always been a very reasoned, um, individual, reasoned colleague. I have enjoyed working with you. I know that we can have very long conversations and have a lot to talk about, but I, I wanna point out one thing that, um, stands out to me is that you've been a voice for inclusivity, um, for advocating for diversity, um, and acceptance, and I'm not saying that others aren't, but, but you definitely have stood out in that and your voice will be missed, but I know that you are, or have other things that you are pursuing and I wanna wish you the best of luck in those endeavors and just thank you. Um, it, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Tricia.
Does anybody else have their hand up? Not that I see, okay.
Okay, um, with that, we're gonna move to superintendent commentary.
I wanna thank you, Jeff, for the, for the feedback and let you know that we're having virtual cake in your honor. No, I would, uh, I would echo, uh, many of the comments tonight. Um, dedicated team here with us tonight, dedicated staff, um, some who may be watching tonight, others who, you know, who, who aren't. Um, but just very proud of, of really the educational industry, uh, you know, taking this challenge, stepping up, doing what we can to support students and to support each other. Uh, really appreciate, um, the board coming together to keep us moving forward. Um, it's an exciting time, it's a challenging time. Um, we've got some other thoughts in, in, in the wings that we'll be bringing to the board, um, probably in the next, uh, couple of meetings, um, just some, some practices that we are learning now that may be very applicable in the future. So, anyway, um, thanks to the team, very, very proud of our teachers and all of our staff. I, I would, uh, say that, um, you know, it's, it's strange in this environment. You know, we hired, I, I think it was three or four district level administrators. Um, and while we're certainly gonna miss, you know, Amy and Judy and who am I missing? Amy and Judy and Paul. Yes, um, we've got some, some, you just approved some really fascinating hires with great backgrounds. Normally would, we would've had them here. Um, so it's just a strange, uh, environment to be doing business. Anyway, I'll stop talking. Thanks, everybody, for all your work. Congratulations, Jeff. We'll see you in your backyard.
All right. This sermon, the pavilion should be done.
All right, great, thank you. So now we're on to, uh, presiding officer commentary in the open forum. It's been, um, catch practice the last few months that I haven't had commentary, but if you will indulge me for a solid three, three and a half minutes, I do have just a short amount of commentary. Uh, my first was a thank you to Dr. Lee. We'll, we'll reiterate that. Thank you so much. Um, in the same vein, I'm coming up on a year as, um, board president and I want to thank my fellow board members for this incredible opportunity. Um, as an indigenous woman, um, representation matters. And this is something that I look at my relatives just two generations back that, um, were, uh, taken to boarding schools and for me to be able to serve as a school board president for one of the largest districts in this state is, um, is, is nothing short of incredible and, and a little bit historic, at least within, um, my indigenous relatives. And also, as a solo parent and representative of a non-traditional family, I think we don't see that enough in elected positions because, quite frankly, it's a hard balance. But, um, uh, I, I also thank you for, for that opportunity, um, because representation does matter. And, um, thank you for, um, allowing some of my ideas. Maybe they weren't always fully embraced, but it seemed for the most part some were. I certainly didn't expect to go on a statewide journey with some of the things that we've done. I certainly hope that some WASB resolutions are pursued in the future. Um, there's a lot of, uh, good that we can do as a collective voice here to improve educational policy in the state of Wisconsin. So, I hope that's something that can continue out of the WSA, um, Board of Education. Uh, just a couple of thank yous, though, um, because I don't know what, what it's going to look like and this might be my last opportunity as your board president, um, to, to say these things in this capacity. I wanna thank Pat as, uh, being an amazing vice president. Um, I appreciate your, uh, approach and your, your common sense and let's get to the numbers and the data and the facts. Uh, we need more of that, just generally. So, thank you so much, um, and for being the sounding board that you've been. Um, I just also wanna thank our union leadership. They've always been, um, have a, a, a very solid, um, communication line that it, I think is important to have. Keith, Dr. Hiltz, you've been great. You know, I'm kind of sad, I don't know if I'm going to have the opportunity to continue in this role, it might be somebody else stepping into it, but if you are, please know that working with Dr. Hiltz is, is something that's not difficult by any means. And I have to say a huge thank you to Cassie Pack because I don't know how this district would run without Cassie Pack. Everybody else can go on vacation, but if Cassie leaves, whoa. So I just want to thank you, Cassie. You have been incredible, just absolutely incredible. I've worked with a lot of people in my professional years and you just are right up there at the top with your level of precision and the things that you do. And so thank you. So with that, I also just want to say thank you to our teachers during this, during this time. I see what my son's teacher is doing, doing Google chats, getting third graders rounded up to do math lessons on the iPad. And I know that this is happening throughout our district. Our teachers and staff are stepping up in amazing ways through this global pandemic. But, you know, we're, we're all going to get through this and this meeting has been interesting. I teach virtually, usually a little smoother than this. And I'm sorry that I can't look everybody in the eye tonight, and I would have liked to. But I think what I'll just wrap it up by saying is, we just have to continue practicing our safe social distancing. Check on your loved ones, but check on yourselves as well, because this is unprecedented times, not just a public health crisis, an economic crisis, but also, also a mental health crisis that people aren't addressing. So try to get out, exercise, do something, maybe not today because old man Winter decided to show back up, but it'll melt soon. In any event, that's my commentary for tonight, just a huge thank you. And just again, a thank you to the rest of the board. We don't do this for the glamour, that's for sure, but it's really important work, local politics, local, local seats are, there's a lot of critical work that comes out of it. So with that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Jeff Lee.
Who was that second? That'll be Lance. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Stay safe, everyone, take care.